Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. This is just a two-minute warning before we get going here. So those that haven't taken a seat, please do. So two minutes and we'll start here. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us here this afternoon. I'm Shane Burke. I'm the city manager and have the honor of calling this official council meeting to order. It's my responsibility to do that before the new council is sworn in. With that, we will begin the procession of the new mayor and council. Thank you and again, welcome. We will begin this event with "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True nature love in all the signs combined. With glowing lights we see rise the true north strong and free. Around far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you and please be seated. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on treaty eight territory within Turtle Island, and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And I'd please welcome Elder Loretta Parento-English to bless this council.
(Applause)
I want to turn this whole thing to the people that are sitting up here because it is their day. So I don't have to turn this way. These are our people that are going to lead this city into greater and more amazing... And I don't know, there's so many words that I want to put to it, but they're going to lead us forward in a really good and positive way. And I thank them all for being here and for even accepting the journey that they're on, that continued journey and the new journey that they're going to be on. So I really thank them from the bottom of my heart. I've said it before, standing up here, my grandfather, the late Charlie Crow Eagle, when he used to pray, he used to always say, "Pray for our leaders." Because we don't know what they go through. A lot of times, they go through a lot. Pray for our leaders, the leaders that are leading us into a greater economy, a better place where we can raise children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Pray for the leaders. And when he said that, he always said, "Remember when you pray, always pray for the leaders." And all these people that stand up here or sitting up here are all our leaders for this community. So keep them in your prayer. I will start off with a prayer. So if you could all stand up and honor... We'll just let the council members sit down, if you don't mind. Lynn, we'll do it my way. Usually, in the Blackfoot way, we stand up, but today is an honor. So we stand in honor of this new team that we have here. So we'll pray all together. I just want to introduce myself. Nitani Gopita Nipodaki. My name is Eagle Flying Low Woman. My late mother gave me that name, and I'm really grateful for it. Prior to that, I had another name that my great-grandmother... Well, she wasn't my great-grandmother. She was my grandmother. We used to call her Na'ah. I never knew her English name until I was probably in almost my twenties. We used to always call her Na'ah. Every time I'd introduce her to my friends, I'd say, "This is Na'ah." That's all I knew her by. And it just reminds me of... I get into stories. It just reminded me of my granddaughter. We were driving and somebody said, "Well, Loretta." And she was really confused. She said, "Can I ask a question? Who is Loretta?" And whoever was talking said, "Your Nama." She said, "Oh, okay." She didn't know what my name was. But that's how I grew up. But when my Na'ah gave me the name, she called me Umkapiaki as a little girl, like a little baby growing up, until my mom gave me another name. And I'm so grateful to those two ladies because they are, to me, very influential matriarchs in my life. So we'll all pray together. Pray that you pray the way that you were taught, just for a good road, a path that these guys are going to lay out for all the community, for everybody around the Northwest Region. So let's all pray together. I am not to assume...
Good afternoon, everyone. This is just a two-minute warning before we get going here. So those that haven't taken a seat, please do. So two minutes and we'll start here. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us here this afternoon. I'm Shane Burke. I'm the city manager and have the honor of calling this official council meeting to order. It's my responsibility to do that before the new council is sworn in. With that, we will begin the procession of the new mayor and council. Thank you and again, welcome. We will begin this event with "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all the skies command. With glowing eyes we see rights. The true north, strong and free. Around fire and white, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you and please be seated. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Cree, Dene, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on Treaty VIII territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign First Nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. And I'd please welcome Elder Loretta Parento-English to bless this council.
I want to turn this whole thing to the people that are sitting up here because it is their day. So I don't have to turn this way. These are our people that are going to lead this city into greater and more amazing... And I don't know, there's so many words that I want to put to it, but they're going to lead us forward in a really good and positive way. And I thank them all for being here and for even accepting the journey that they're on, that continued journey and the new journey that they're going to be on. So I really thank them from the bottom of my heart. I've said it before, standing up here, my grandfather, the late Charlie Crow Eagle, when he used to pray, he used to always say, "Pray for our leaders because we don't know what they go through. A lot of times, they go through a lot. Pray for our leaders, the leaders that are leading us into a greater economy, a better place where we can raise children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Pray for the leaders." And when he said that, he always said, you know, "Remember, when you pray, always pray for the leaders." And all these people that stand up here or sitting up here are all our leaders for this community. So keep them in your prayer. I will start off with a prayer. So if you could all stand up in honor of... We'll just let the council members sit down, if you don't mind. Len, we'll do it my way. Usually, in the Blackfoot way, we stand up, but today is an honor. So we stand in honor of this new team that we have here. So we'll pray all together. I just want to introduce myself. Nitani Gopita Ni Pudaki. My name is Eagle Flying Low Woman. My late mother gave me that name, and I'm really grateful for it. Prior to that, I had another name that my great-grandmother... Well, she wasn't my great-grandmother, she was my grandmother. We used to call her Na'ah. I never knew her English name until I was probably in my, almost my twenties. We used to always call her Na'ah. Every time I'd introduce her to my friends, I'd say, "This is Na'ah." That's all I knew her by. And it just reminds me of... I get into stories. It just reminded me of my granddaughter. We were driving and somebody said, "Well, Loretta." And she was really confused. She said, "Can I ask a question? Who is Loretta?" And whoever was talking said, "Your Nama." She said, "Oh, okay." She didn't know what my name was. But that's how I grew up. But when my Na'ah gave me the name, she called me Umkapiaki as a little girl, like a little baby, growing up, until my mom gave me another name. And I'm so grateful to those two ladies because they are, to me, very, very influential matriarchs in my life. So we'll all pray together. Pray the way that you were taught, just for a good road, a path that these guys are going to lay out for all the community, for everybody around the northwest region. So let's all pray together. Ayu Nitsa Bata Pi. Ayu Napi Napu Si Umkina Xkipitakiks. Ayu Na'ah, Ayu Tata. Ayu Spumu Si Amuksi. Nitsu Dumaitakiyo. Amu Achi Murska Na'etsu Bata Pi. Amuksi Apoutaki Tamuk Spumuau. Iks Dunatapi Ikutisana Nitsu Tapia Pi. Spumu Si Na'etsu Bata Pi. Napu Aki Amuksi Aki Tamuk Skamisa. Iks Dunatapi Ik Sukapi Amuksi Ikutisana Nitsu Tapia Piyo. Kimatu Kinnan Nitsu Bata Pi. Niks Ikukos Ik Sukos Ik Umkina Xkipitakiks. Nenakx Matapiks Tamuk Spumuau Nitsu Bata Pi. Iks Dunatapi Amuksi Ikutisan Amuksi Eitsipui. Tamuk Spumu Si Na'etsu Bata Pi. Ayu Kimatu Kinnan Nitsu Bata Pi. Ayu Spumu Si Amuksi. Iks Dunatapi Amuksi Apoutakiyo. Spumuau Nitsu Bata Pi. Ayu Kimatu Kinnan Pi Damuk Skamisa Napu Si Damuk Spumuau. Ayu Kimatu Kinnan Nitsu Bata Pi Ayu Kamutani Hey. Ken. Thank you so much. You can sit down.
Now, welcome Justice Davis, who we're honored here to do this formal swearing-in for mayor and council. We will begin with Mayor Jackie Clayton.
I swear that I will diligently... I swear that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of mayor... the office of mayor...
I'll now welcome up Leonard Oje. Now, welcome Grant Burke.
I, Grant Burke. I, Grant Burke. Solemnly affirm... solemnly affirm... that I will diligently... that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council...
I'll now welcome Dylan Bresson.
I, Dylan Bresson. I, Dylan Bresson. Solemnly affirm... solemnly affirm... that I will diligently... that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council...
Please welcome Jenna Flack.
I, Jenna Flack. I, Jenna Flack. Solemnly affirm... solemnly affirm... that I will diligently... that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council...
Please welcome Mike O'Connor.
I, Mike O'Connor. Swear that I will diligently... swear that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council... so help me God.
And next, welcome Kevin O'Toole.
I, Kevin O'Toole. I, Kevin O'Toole. Swear that I will diligently... swear that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council...
I'll now welcome Wade Plon.
Hi, Chuck. I, Wade Plon. I, Wade Plon. Solemnly affirm... solemnly affirm... that I will diligently... that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council...
I'll now welcome Chris Teason.
I, Chris Teason. I, Chris Teason. Swear that I will diligently... swear that I will diligently... faithfully and to the best of my ability... faithfully and to the best of my ability... execute according to law... execute according to law... the office of council... the office of council... so help me God... so help me God...
This is your 2025-2029 mayor and city council for the city of Grand Prairie. I'll now welcome up Mayor Jackie Clayton.
It won't be the first name. That's a little unusual. But anyways, good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us as we mark the beginning of a new chapter for the city of Grand Prairie. It's an incredible honor to stand here before you as your mayor for a second term. But today isn't about me, it's about us. It's about the new council, the people we serve, and the future we will build together. Now, as I call your names, I want to ask that you hold your applause again and give the group a big round of applause. Len and Grant, Dylan, Jen, Mike, Kevin, Wade, Chris, please rise, join me in welcoming the new council. So first, I want to acknowledge... Please be seated. First, I want to acknowledge the previous council, their dedication and many hours of hard work that helped strengthen our city over the past four years, their willingness to listen, to debate, to make difficult decisions, laid the groundwork for the progress that we will continue today. To my colleagues who are joining me new for this term, thank you for stepping forward. Public service is not for the faint of heart. It takes courage and patience and conviction to put your name forward and to commit to making decisions that will shape our city's future. I know each of you will come forward with unique experiences and a shared desire to keep pushing, keep building, and keep achieving all that Grand Prairie is capable of. And to the incredible team that keeps our organization running, our administration, our dedicated employees, and our leadership team led by our CAO Shane Burke, thank you. Your professionalism and your commitment to innovation, service, and excellence ensure that our community continues to thrive. The partnership between council and administration is vital to achieving our goals, and I look forward to continuing that strong collaboration. I also want to take a moment to thank the families and loved ones of our elected officials. You share the sacrifices that come with public service, the missed dinners, the late meetings, the moments that we carry, and the weight of tough decisions. Please know that your support, your kindness, and your belief in us means a lot, and we simply couldn't do this without our families and friends and support. Over the past term, we've made tremendous strides. We've streamlined services and reduced red tape and added recreational amenities. We strengthened regional partnerships and pushed Grand Prairie to the forefront of investment and economic opportunities. This progress doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of people, council, administration, and community members who choose to work together. We choose courage over comfort and collaboration over division and action over hesitation. And now, as we begin this new term, we're standing on a solid foundation, but we also are standing at the edge of an excellent opportunity. Grand Prairie is growing, and families are choosing to move here, businesses are investing here, and we're being recognized across the province and beyond as a place of innovation, leadership, collaboration, and possibility. The next four years will be about building smarter, connecting stronger, and dreaming bigger. Grand Prairie's strength has always been its people, its entrepreneurs, the volunteers, the community builders, and the families who give their time and their heart to make Grand Prairie grander. They are the reason we continue to push forward with optimism and determination. To my fellow counselors, our residents have placed confidence and trust in us. They expect us to lead with integrity, humility, and collaboration. They expect us to listen, to ask tough questions, and to make tough, thoughtful, balanced decisions. We won't always agree, and that's healthy. Our differences create space for better solutions. What matters most is that we work through them with respect and open minds and a shared focus for what is best for Grand Prairie. We have a responsibility not just to manage the present but to shape the future, one that is welcoming and vibrant and ready for what's next. Grand Prairie is more than a city, it's a community built on energy, creativity, and resilience. Now, as we begin this new term, let's continue to build on the momentum. Let's be bold in our ideas, compassionate in our decisions, and united on our purpose. Together with council, administration, our community partners, and the people of this great city, we will continue to make Grand Prairie a place where opportunity lives, families flourish, and dreams can take root. I look forward to what we will achieve together. Thank you. So we're going to have recess. We're going to share some tea and whatever's ever behind the fine gentlemen from our fire department. I don't think they're serving, they're just keeping it warm. And then we will recess until six o'clock when we go back to council chambers to have our MGA requirement of a meeting, which will be our organizational meeting, the first meeting of this council term. So please join us. Let's mingle, let's mix. And for those who want to take pictures, there's the backdrops there. And to my colleagues, I will meet you at City Hall at six o'clock. Thanks, everyone.